First and foremost, we give all praises and glory to your hawa. By Hashemi Al Shad, by Hashemi Kakarash, Hawa is the name of the Holy Father. Who do we call God? And his name in Hebrew means he exists, and he has our side of the name is only God's son. Who do we call Jesus Christ? And his name in Hebrew means he is delivered by Hashem to the name. For Kakarash, the Holy Spirit, when he could delve on us to apostles and others who great milestone will. Peace and blessing to this shocking that's pushed forward in the truth that the four corners of the earth. I want to say shalom to brothers and keep pushing and the double shalom to today's like this look like the other nations. And Shalwati mama say shalom to brothers sisters as well. My name is Deva from G M S line St Louis camp and I'll come back at another video. And. I'm entitled it. I don't know why I'm entitled as yet, but something to do with this article that I'm about to go over. So Missouri school board to reinstate black history classes with new curriculum. Okay, which we know that Esau Edom he's been talking about trying to take slavery out of the history books. All right. And yeah, uh, what like the scripture says for thy violence against thy brother Jacob shame shall cover thee. Okay, and you know, shame is uh. It's covering you Edomites, you so-called white people, because that's uh. Your biblical nationality is Esau Edom. Okay. And you know, you're not white, because you know, Eden means red, you know, you have different shades of red from. You know, from pale to a deep red. Okay, like going into those Edomites to have their sunburn on that beach. Okay, just super red, okay? And. Uh, I mean, shit. I mean, I don't get no more clearer than that. That who you people are according to the Bible, you know, the people that. Y'all watch me on shot hates. And don't get me wrong, um. You do have Israelites that scattered abroad. Among the Edomites and you know, they're part of elect, they're gonna come into the truth. Or you know, just because you were. A speckle bird, then I mean, you're part of the elect too, you know, just gotta get that out of there. If you even got Israelites that sold their soul like Eminem, we believe that he is like. He sold his soul. But uh, kind of going off on another topic, but. Without further ado, it's going to happen to. This article and I'm pulling some precepts alone to be able to find, so this is. The article, so this was December twenty eighth, today is the thirtieth, so this is two days ago. I'm gonna read right here, it says students at a suburban St Louis school district can take elective black history. Courses in a reversal. At a conservative led. School board's decision just last week to cancel the classes. Right, so yeah, they to reinstate. To reinstate it because you know, these. These Edomites, they don't care about us. We do have a lot. You got a lot of Edomites is trying to, you know, um. The so-called feel sorry. For what they did because you know, hey, it's a shameful history. I mean, it's real shameful, we had the little Edomite boy that was crying, said that he didn't want to be white. Okay, which he could be a Jake, but you know, you never know. But you know, you got a lot of Edomites is ashamed now. Because they're like, damn, like, hey, we done effed up. Because we done touched the Lord's people, okay? So this is. First paragraph, so St Louis. Students at a suburban St Louis school district can continue to take elective black history courses. School leaders announced Thursday in reversal of a vote. Last week by the conservative led school board to end the classes. But the Francis Howard School District. Board must first approve a new curriculum that is. Uh rigorous and largely politically neutral. The board president and superintendent said in a statement Thursday. To the St Louis Post Dispatch. Right, so kind of yeah, probably was getting into like political debates and stuff. Hey, because it's the truth. Because they, when the truth comes out, okay, people get offended. All right, especially you Edomites, man, uh, about like what you did, because you wanna. Hold on to the history and um, like, like. Try to sweep that under the rug about what you did, but hey, you did it. You know, I mean, like the Lord never said. Um, steal a people and because you know, you had the Bible in your hand. You know, since you so righteous and a Christian, right? The Lord never said, take nobody land. The Lord never said none of that, you know, you couldn't wait to get over here so you can impress Jacob, I like you always have. Okay. So let's keep reading. It says after thorough discussions, we believe that there is an appropriate path for to offer black history and black literature. With the updated curriculum standard in the twenty twenty four through twenty twenty five. School year board president Adam Berthain and superintendent Kenneth. Uh, Ron Post said the Francis Howard School District Board voted filed it to last week to stop offering bright black history. And black literature courses that had been offered at the districts. Three high schools since two thousand twenty one. So that was just a little bit after covid, you know, because the world changed. It's like this information era. Hey, don't think for a second. That the Edomites don't know who the so-called black Hebrew Israelites are, which we're we're not black. You know, we different shades of brown, because it's only. Um, only three tribes particularly identify with Negro, Judah, Benjamin, and Levi. And even then you have some. Um. Like some, some Negro is amongst the northern kingdom. You know, there's northern kingdom, right, they they might be southern kingdom mixed in with them. But you know, you got some Puerto Ricans can pass for blacks, some Dominicans can play can pass for uh, black. Okay. Yeah, and this is highlighted. Yep, it says a little over a hundred students took the courses this semester. In a predominantly white suburban area of St Louis, last week decisions to drop the courses was met. With protests outside the board meeting several parents and. Students chanting, let them learn, right, so yeah, let them learn. Yes, let them learn. All right, which we don't really care about the school system anyway, because the school system is corrupt. Okay. Already like people are already out there shooting, you know, hearing damn. You know, hey, this uh, new year, this spirit, this new year coming in with a with a bang, okay? This is already, they're already talking about wars and stuff, you know, which is gonna be a civil war. Okay, um. Over here in the western part of the world in Babylonic great AKA. Uh, United States of America. Okay. That is all I had on it, and yeah, Missouri is a racist state. You know, it's a lot of sundown towns is uh. Uh, over here, all right, and even at one point in time, um. Ferguson was a sundown town. Okay, that's where Mike Brown got shot. Okay. When you go throughout Ferguson, man, shit, it look like a damn sundown town. At the railroad over there, got um. You know, like, like, look, like little small, like little stores and stuff, it looked like one. You know, but Jake just been moving in. Moving in, moving in, moving in, you know, just taking over. That's why these Edomites are gonna um, gonna roll, because they feel like they losing their country. Okay. And guess what, you are, you losing your power. And there's a little bit of history to go into uh, with um. Missouri Compromise of eighteen twenty. I'm just reading a little bit and laws should be able to find. It says this legislation. Admitted Missouri as a slave state and Maine as a non-slave state at the same time. So as not to upset the balance between. Between slave. And free states in the nation. It also outlawed slavery above the thirty six thirty latitude line in the remainder of the Louisiana territory. With the purchase of the Louisiana territory and the application of Missouri for statehood. The longstanding balance between the number of. Slave states and the number of free states would be changed. Controversy arose within Congress. Over the issue of slavery, right? Congress adopted this legislation and admitted Missouri as a slave state and Maine as a non-slave state. At the same time. So that the balance between slave and free states in the nation would remain equal. The Missouri Compromise also proposed that slavery prohibited. Above the thirty six thirty latitude line in the remainder of the Louisiana territory. This provision held. Thirty four years until it was repealed. Repelled by the Kansas Nebraska Act of eighteen fifty four. Alright, so in eighteen fifty seven, Supreme Court ruled that the Missouri Compromise was unconstitutional and is. Dread Scott Sanford decision, the document featured here. And a conference committee report on a Missouri compromise, right? Because uh, you know, you got the Dread Scott building is downtown St Louis. Okay, where Dread Scott lost. Because you know, he was actually a resident of uh. Of Illinois, okay, but they held the court. Here in Missouri, you know, which he lost, because um. He was in. Um, a free state and they was. You know, they like they was basically treating him like he was a slave, so let's click on Dread Scott. Yeah. So yeah, Dread Scott versus Sanford eighteen fifty seven. In this ruling, the US Supreme Court stated that enslaved people were not citizens. At the United States and therefore could not. Expect any protection from the federal government. Or the courts, the opinion also stated that Congress had no authority to ban slavery. From a federal territory in eighteen forty six. And just, you know, reading a little bit of this. And a slave black man named Dread Scott and his wife Harriet sued for their freedom in St Louis. Circuit Court. They claimed that they were free due to their residence in a free territory. Where slavery was prohibited, the odds were in their favor. They had lived with their enslaver and army surgeon. And Fort Snellen. Then in the free territory of Wisconsin. The Scott's freedom could be established on the grounds. That had been held in bondage for extended. Periods in a free territory and where. Then returned to a slaves state. Courts had ruled this way in the past. Actually, yeah, so here it is. Now you wanted to get. Free from his slave master, you know, because he was in a free state. But they basically saying like, nah, you still a nigga, okay? And you my property. So you can't, you can't be free and so-called white men still feel like that, they still feel like you their property. You know, whether on a job. And yeah, like, and even these Edomites. That um. You know, like they want to be cool with you. Like on job or whatever. Uh, they, they still feel this way. Or they feel like you supposed to do what they say whenever they say it. Okay, but hey, you Edomites, you don't have control of us no more. You know? And a big brother, Yawashe. He gonna come and uh, redeem us, because you know, you still got more rights, you know, than the so-called black man. Okay, police can, but the police can still stand you out of the coral, do it, do whatever. But uh, but hey, shit, we about to get about this place, man. Okay. And call her lonely, how about Shemel Shah? Says however, what happened to be a straightforward lawsuit between two parties. Became an eleven year struggle. That culminated. In one of the most notorious decisions ever issued by the. United States Supreme Court, Scott lost his case. Which worked its way into the Missouri State Courts. He then filed a new federal suit, which ultimately reached the Supreme Court. On his way to the Supreme Court, the Dread Scott case grew in scope and significance as slavery. Became the most explosive issue in American politics. Right, because you know, hey, Jake get tired of it, you know, like who the hell want to live their life as a, you know, as a slave? You know, if you a slave, you basically a beggar. Okay, because um, that's part of the curses, you know, you just hurt the enemies for needing one of all things. Okay. It says. By the time the case reached the high court, it had. It had come to have enormous. Political implications for the entire nation. On March sixth eighteen fifty seven. Chief Justice Roger B. Tanny. Read the majority opinion of the court, which stated that enslaved people were not citizens of the United States. And therefore could not expect any protection from the federal government or the courts. Right, so basically a POW, you know, you just hear. You don't have rights, because you know, like those rights apply to. Uh, Esau Edom, they don't apply to a nigga. Or his, or uh, so-called Hispanic or wetback. Or native Indian, all right? It says the opinion also stated that Congress had no authority to ban slavery from a federal. Territory, but ain't that what the whole act was about? You know, see Jake don't get no fair treatment up in this place. Said this, this decision move the nation a step closer to the Civil War. The decision of Scott versus Sanford, considered by many legal scholars to be the worst ever rendered by the Supreme Court. Was overturned by the thirteen to fourteen amendment. Of the Constitution, which abolished slavery and declared all persons born in the United States to be citizens. Of the United States. Alright, so let's look at that, uh, let's, let's look at those uh, amendments, so thirteen to fourteen amendments. Then I'm gonna hop into some scriptures. So thirteen. Thirteen amendment to the United States Constitution provides. That neither slavery nor involuntary servitude except as a punishment for a crime. Whereof the party. Should have been duly convicted, shall exist within the United States or any subject to their jurisdiction. Right, right, so yeah, except for punishment of a crime. Which the um, you know, which the prison systems. Okay, it's just another. It is another form of slavery. You know, like that's why Esau Edom push. His rap music and. Trying to put Jake in like a poverty stricken state. You know, so what, so they can steal and break laws. Alright, so yeah, thirteen amendment abolished slavery. Fourteen amendment. You know, I, I believe at the top of my head. That's um, so like anybody born in the United States is uh. Is a citizen. Okay. Yep, it says passed by the Senate on June. Eighth eighteen sixty six. And ratified two years later on July ninth eighteen sixty eight. The fourteen amendment granted citizenship to all persons born and naturalized in the United States. Including formerly enslaved people and provided all citizens with equal protection under laws, right? So yeah, fourteen amendment. Okay, yeah, how about Shemel Shire? Um, it's basically like turning things around, like to give Jake a little bit of leeway. And a little bit of freedom. You know, like, and shit, look at this now. Um. Two hundred and fifty years later. Okay. No, three hundred years later. Just say, um, you know, on the streets and we telling you devil's your downfall. Alright. I ain't gonna make this too much longer. So yeah, Obadiah, let me just read it all the way through. The vision of Obadiah that said the Lord God concerning Edom. And we already established who is the nation of Edom, we have heard a rumor from the Lord. And an ambassador is sent among the heathen, arise ye and let us. Rise up against her and battle, behold, I have made thee small among the heathen that are greatly despised, right? So yeah, let us rise up against them and battle. You know, because the nation of Edom is about to get ready to go into slavery. And on top of that, and be destroyed. You know, because you hate it. I mean, you hated by everything. That like the whole creation is against you Edomites. The pride of thy heart hath deceived thee, thou art a dweller in the cliffs of the rock, whose habitation is high. That said in his heart, who shall bring me down to the ground? Yeah, that's the pride. Though I exhort thyself as the eagle, and though I set thy nest among the stars, thus will I bring thee down, save the Lord. Right, yeah, the Lord. Is uh, bringing you Edomites down, alright? And what's the symbol of America, the eagle? Alright, let's look at that. Yeah. So kind of, that is right there. That's the symbol, and I suppose to represent the pride. You know, hey, and, and look at that eagle, you know, it's a real. Proud bird, because you know, he at the top of the food chain, you know, he can fly higher than any bird. Alright. Actually, so Lucy gonna bring you down, said if these came to thee of robbers by night. How are thou cut off? Would they not have stolen till they had enough? If the grape gatherers came to thee, would they not leave some grapes? Right, because he said he uh, he do way too much, and he don't leave nothing. You know, it's a law and a law. That you supposed to like leave something for the poor. If they come up, okay? It says, um. Verse six, how are the things of Esau searched out, how are his hid things sorted up? All the men of thy confederacy have brought thee even to the border. The men that are at peace with thee have deceived thee and revealed against thee. They that eat thy bread have laid a wound on the thee. There was none understanding in the. In him. Right? Because they, uh, because everybody gonna turn on uh, America, the whore. We didn't even say the beast should eat the whore. And that mighty man, Oteeman, should be dismayed to the end that every one of the mount of Esau. May be cut up by slaughter. For thy violence against thy brother Jacob, shame shall cover thee. And thou shalt be cut off forever. Right, for the violence, you know, because like, hey, even in this time period. Um, let me see. So yeah, recon, they, they call it reconstruction era. So reconstruction? The reconstruction era was a period in the United States following the American Civil War. Dominated by the legal, social, and political challenges of abolishing slavery. And reintegrated the former Confederate states of America into the United States. Alright, so you're doing this period, three amendments were added, so uh, so thirteen, so thirteen fourteen. Okay, uh, as far as what I know. Um, three amendments, let me see. So thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, right, that makes sense. Right? And which is basically uh, blacks trying to. Um, you know, like uh, build back. And you know, build back themselves, like for everything that they fought for. And you know, and, and even after the South, they, you know, they lost the war, you still had the KKK. Those Edomites that went around, you know, lynching Jake because they was jealous. And shit, you know, because I used to always been jealous. You know, of Jake, the birthright. You know, because it all goes back to what, that, that birthright, that they don't want you to have anything. Says and that mighty man, Oteeman, should be dismayed to the end, everyone in the Mount Esau shall. That may be cut up by slaughter, right? For thy violence against thy brother Jacob, shame shall cover thee, and thou shalt be cut off forever, right, so you gonna be cut off forever. Oh, who's lucky? It's real late at night, it's lucky. Started to get a video in. Before I, you know, check out for the night. Spirit was on me, you know, seeing it and um. Little put spirit on me to do a video, alright, so call her, I'm like, how about Shemel Shire? Spirit's still working with me. As you know. You know, I, I, you know, it's a fight to do videos, because you know, like the flesh don't want to do nothing. Plus, you know, we working and, you know, we tired and. I got bills and all, all type of shit that we gotta deal with. It says. Verse eleven, in the day that thou stoodest on the other side, and the day that the strangers carried away captive his forces. And foreigners entered into his gates and cast lots upon Jerusalem. Even thou was one of them, actually, even you was one of them. Okay, because hey, even then you had uh. Esau Edom that came that was helping the Babylonians. Alright, destroy our shit. Destroy our temple, uh, you know, I, our gates. Verse twelve, but thou shouldst not have looked on the day of thy brother. And the day that he became a stranger. Neither shouldst thou have rejoiced over the children of Judah. In the day of their destruction, neither shouldst thou have spoken proudly in the day of distress. Thou shouldst not have entered into the gate of my people in the day of their calamity, yea. Thou shouldst not have looked on their affliction in the day of their calamity. Nor have laid hands on the substance in the day of their calamity. Thou shouldst thou have stood. In a crossway to cut off those. Of he is that did escape, neither shouldst thou have delivered up. Those that did remain in the day of distress. For the day that the Lord is near upon all the heathen. Right, as thou hast done, it shall be done unto thee. Thy warriors shall return upon their own head. Right, so yeah, so all the heathens, so don't worry, Esau, hey, you gonna have company. You know, while you in slavery, getting your back beat. And getting um, discriminated against and getting, you know, profiled. You know, I mean, you, you a Edomite. You know, everybody gonna know, you know, it's not gonna be confusion, all, all, we are all one people. You know, it's not gonna be a. Uh, a damn. A damn terror in the kingdom, you know? You know, everybody's gone, it's gonna be categorized, it's who they are, more, you a more, but you an Israelite. This is, you know, there's nothing wrong with segregation. Okay, so segregation keeps order. You know, it's like how you uh, put. You know, your socks in the sock drawer and your drawers in the drawers drawer. Or even um. Or even if they in the same drawer, they still segregated, so these socks over here, these drawers over here. Okay. Says, um. Says um. For as ye have drunk upon my holy mountain, so shall all the heathen drink continually, yea, they shall drink. And they shall swallow down. And they shall be as though they had not been, right? So right, so yeah, ain't nobody gonna remember. You know, when Israelites get into power. It's gonna. It's gonna be as though, number one, you Edomites is never in power, and then after uh. Get eradicated. It's gonna be like. Yeah, never existed. Okay? It says, but upon Zion shall be deliverance. And there shall be holiness and the house of Jacob shall possess their possessions. And the house of Esau, so lucky, and the house of Jacob, I'm tired. Shall be afar and the house of Joseph aflame. And the house of Esau for stubble. They shall kinder in them and devour them. And there shall not be any remaining of the house of Esau, for the Lord hath spoken it. And they of the south shall possess the Mount of Esau. They are. Playing the Philistines and they shall possess the Phila Ephraim. Anaphil's of Samaria and Benjamin shall possess Gleed. And captivity. Are the host of the children of Israel, shall possess that of the Canaanites, even of Suserafeth. And the captivity of Jerusalem, which is in. Sepharis, shall possess the cities of the south. And slavery shall come up on Mount Zion to judge the Mount of Esau. And the kingdom shall be the Lord's, right? And that's the elect. Yeah? Like a two or one, who wants to them to devise iniquity? And work evil upon their beds when the morning is light, they practice it. Because it is in the power of their hand. And they cover fields and take them of violence and houses and take them away. So they, so they oppress a man in his house, even a man in his heritage. Right? So yeah, cause uh they do it upon their beds, cause they don't, they don't sleep without doing something wicked to Jake. Okay? Therefore, thus said the Lord, hold against this family. Do I devise the evil from which ye shall not remove your next, neither shall ye go haughtily, for this time is evil. Skip down to verse ten. And arise ye in the park, for this is not your rest. Because it is polluted, it shall destroy you even with a sword of destruction, right? So it's talking about. This captivity, America, you know, you, hey, you still got niggas that wanna stay here. Okay, hey, we trying to get about of this place, man. Cause the faster. Our place, uh. The faster this place goes down, the faster the kingdom haven't get established. Alright, I'm ending off with this, so this is Ziggy or thirty five and one. Moreover, the word of the Lord came unto me, saying, son of man, set thy face against Mount Seir and prophesy against it. And say unto it, thus said the Lord, God, behold, on Mount Seir, I am against thee. I will stretch out my hand against thee, and I will make thee most desolate. I will lay thy city's waste, and thou should be desolate, and thou shall know that I am the Lord. Because thou hast had a perpetual hatred and it shed the blood. Of the children of I- Israel by the force of the sword in a time of the calamity. And the time that their iniquity had an end. Therefore, as I live, said the Lord God, I will prepare thee unto blood. And blood shall pursue thee, since thou had not hated blood, ye, and blood shall pursue thee. Right, so come, that's what Lord is about to do. So come, I'm gonna go ahead and off with that, I wanna say.